Sit down.
Okay, so it's six thirty-six or six thirty-seven. And I'd like to call to order the Merrimack Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, August sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. If you would, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so just as a reminder for everybody that speaks, to please have your microphones turned on and to speak clearly into the microphone. The next planning board meeting is currently scheduled for Tuesday, August twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, at six thirty in the Matthew Thornton Room. I would like to welcome Andy Hunter to the board as the new Council Ex officio. And I would also like to get appoint Lynn in for Bob. Okay. And number two on the consent agenda. I guess need approval here, so the will of the board.
I'll move we approve the consent agenda as per the.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Pay attention.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, abstaining? Okay. The four zero zero. All right.
Yep. That was an aside.
All right, so item number three, Merrimack Parcel LLC, Cara Thomas Monahan, applicant owner, requests for approval of an amended site plan for a mixed-use development in accordance with the Merrimack Park Place Mixed Use Conditional Use Permit. The proposal calls for a hundred-room hotel and approximately nineteen thousand five hundred square foot, two-story, mixed-use building containing restaurant, commercial, and office space, and a hundred and seventy-eight multifamily residential unit building. The parcels are located at one, two, and four Lexington Court in the I-two Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area. Tax map three C lots one ninety-one dash two U two dash one nine one dash two U four. Case Planning Board two thousand and twenty-four dash ten. This item is continued from the May seventh, June fourth, and July second meetings. Okay, so will of the board for this continuance? Have a motion at, or do I have to do that?
At the applicant's request, I'm going to recommend that the board continue the applicant's public hearing to September third, two thousand and twenty-four, at six thirty in the Matthew Thornton Room with no further notice to a butters.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second with John. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstaining? Or any against? Any abstaining? Okay, four zero zero. Okay, number four, Conote LLC applicant and Connor Beattie owner, review for applicant acceptance and consideration of a four-lot subdivision. The parcel is located at one oh three Severance Bridge Road in the R-two Residential by Soils and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map three A lot fifty-five, case Planning Board two thousand and twenty-four dash zero eight. This item is continued from the June eighteenth and July second, two thousand and twenty-two meetings. Is there anything to know about this before we hear from the?
Uh, nope, the applicant can make, the applicant can make his presentation.
Okay, perfect, then you're welcome to, go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Matt Peterson with Keach Nordstrom Associates, here representing the proposed residential frontage subdivision application in front of the Merrimack Planning Board tonight. It is one oh three Severance Bridge Road. With me tonight is Connor, the applicant. As you can see from the aerial photo here in front of you, this parcel is located on Severance Bridge Road. This is the existing house in the middle of the property. This is one of our butters here. The property kind of comes up to the power lines, across the power lines, and kind of comes back down around to the side here. This applicant was granted a variance on June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four to allow reduced frontage lots. The requirements for two hundred feet of frontage, we got a variance to allow one hundred and eleven point three eight, one hundred and twenty point nine five, one oh three point three zero, and thirty-seven point eight nine. Just to give a little bit of a background before I go into the existing conditions plan here, we had submitted to this board about a month and a half ago, a proposal for a four-lot subdivision with a proposed town road as part of that application. Going through the TRC meeting with staff, Dawn was very adamant that she did not want a two-hundred-foot cul-de-sac for the town to maintain when we could get the same amount of lots doing frontage lots. We are proposing, and I'll go through this in the application, two common driveways. So on the previous application we had submitted to was a town road with three driveways coming off of it, and then a second driveway for the fourth lot. So we still have the exact same number of curb cuts that we would as the first application that went to you. It's why we've been delayed here a little bit. Again, this came from DPW. There is a letter, I'm not sure if you guys got a copy of Dawn's letter, but she wrote a letter to the zoning board that outlined her request to ask us to go to this avenue to a frontage lot instead of the town road. I think it's pretty obvious in the sense that some people felt that Dawn wasn't really potentially looking out in the best interest of the town. I would say she was looking to save some costs of the town and maintenance and stuff like that that were out there. When you do these smaller cul-de-sacs, we see them in some of these other towns, Auburn's got one and stuff like that. They're just small two-hundred, three-hundred-foot cul-de-sacs, they're very difficult sometimes for the towns to maintain them, to get to them and stuff like that. So this seemed to be a nice compromise to work with the town and come back with what we were proposing. The parcel itself here is approximately thirteen acres, thirteen point six five acres in size. This is Zoned Residential. It's actually Residential One for the top half here, in the back where the grade all goes up, and it's Residence Two in the front where it's flat and it butts Severance Bridge Road. The total frontage of this parcel is three hundred and seventy-three point five two feet. And again, that was broken down into four lots that we obtained the variance for. The applicant, application in front of the board tonight is for four single-family residential lots. The subdivision plan that we put in the package outlines the existing house that will be taken down, the existing driveway that would be removed, and then shows the four proposed lots that range everywhere from two point one one acres to four point zero four three acres in size. We also, I believe, made this very clean. The lots don't jog a lot to get around and get areas and stuff like that. They come out off at pretty much ninety degrees from the main road and then go back into the site. Setbacks and stuff like this are all shown for our front setbacks and our side setbacks. We also proposed the easements up in the front here, and those two easements are shown on this plan here for the common driveway. And we broke it off very quickly so that they're really basically individual lots, they just come to a point at the end, you're not traveling thirty, forty feet up the common driveway before you split off, you're making the split relatively quickly by the road. The next sheet in our set is the topographic subdivision plan. On this sheet here, you can see the steep slopes that are over twenty-five percent, those are kind of hatched in our areas that are here. You also see the trail network that's kind of existing through the site right now. We do have a small wetland in the back upper corner. We have shown the setbacks for that around it. But with this development here, everything's going to be up at the front of the parcel. That's why it made sense for the frontage lot. We have shown the four K areas, these are for approval from the state subdivision up at DES. We have to show a four thousand square foot area in each lot to prove out that it can handle a small septic system. The septic system obviously is much smaller than that once we go to full design, but this proves out the lots can handle an onsite septic. We actually have the test pits also on this sheet here to the left of that sheet. And then we show the wells on the property as well, on where they would go. Because we had gone through and done a lot of work on this previously with the road, we had actually looked at homes as well in here, and it was something that I felt was good to bring to the zoning board to show preliminary where the homes could go and how they would be put out there. So typically on a frontage lot subdivision, you see a two-sheeter plan set, your subdivision plan and topographic plan. We actually had extra data because of what we did there, so we've included that here. And we felt it was important, again, working with Dawn, the erosion control, this is a steep slope that's going up, we wanted to make sure Connor understood that when he goes out there construction, taking into consideration the erosion control measures that should be out there if he was putting in a town road or anything else like that. So we actually included erosion control plan in this plan set, which is something you don't typically see on a lot frontage plan set. Also on that, we did a second sheet to just show conceptual lot development. Again, I think some of the things of the zoning board that we should have been, that we were looking at was, you can see the house across the street here. We wanted to show where the driveway should go so that when we got to planning board, they weren't coming out directly across from that house. And when he puts this in, he's got locations right now to where he's going to locate the the common driveways. We also showed profiles of the driveways coming into the site to show that they can work and how they would work. We also did site distance profiles for both of these driveways here. So we've got a three point seven five eye height at the driveway, and we're looking at approximately four hundred feet in both directions for the site distance. I will say that we have not received any comments yet from staff or from Dawn or any of that yet, so this is all, obviously needs to be reviewed and taken a look at from their standpoint. Second, site distance profile that we've done. And then our last sheet, again, not typically in this, but we have details to go with the plan set that's there. My next, the only last thing I wanted to bring up, and I was really hoping Nelson was going to be here, but we did ask for one waiver request. I would rather not build sidewalks out this location of town. I think this is maybe the one waiver I've asked for in the last few years from him on sidewalk, but unless I'm missing something, I don't see a sidewalk out in this location being, making sense. That's really the total of our project that's here, and I can answer any questions or comments the board has.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Okay. So the next then is it for, to vote whether the application is complete?
I move that we accept the application as, as complete.
Okay, and a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstaining? Four zero zero. Okay. And as far as the waivers, do we have a motion for the waiver?
Go for it.
I move that we accept the waiver as proposed.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It makes sense in that location.
Yeah, it does.
Okay, opposed, abstaining? Okay, four zero zero. All right. And then, do I need to open up then for public? Okay, is there any members of the public then that wish to speak?
Four.
Four or against? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Okay, and then?
I recommend that the board make a finding that with the granted waiver and the proposed conditions of approval, the application meets all applicable regulatory requirements necessary, and further to grant conditional final approval to the application, subject to the recommended conditions of approval presented in the staff memo dated August second, two thousand and twenty-four.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining? Okay, four zero zero.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
We made it.
Okay. Item five on the agenda, Belle and Ian McLeod owner, applicant owner, requests for approval of conditional use permit for a level-two home occupation for a dog grooming business. The parcel is located at seventeen Wilson Hill Road in the R-one Residential by Map District, tax map five B lot two two four, case Planning Board two thousand and twenty-four dash fifteen. All right, if you'd like to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about.
Hi. Yep, my name's Belle McLeod. Me and my husband are owners of McLeod Manor LLC. We already went through the zoning board and we got a variance to allow us to have a grooming business at our property as long as we pass this meeting. And one thing I did not include was a floor plan with the square footage, so I do have a drawing of that, that I can present for that. And do I read through this application?
Yeah, just list off.
Okay. So the total square footage for our business usage is four hundred and four point eight square feet. We aren't going to have any commercial vehicles in connection with our home occupation. There's only going to be one person working in the salon, and that's going to be me myself. My husband is helping to manage it, but other than that, I'm the only active worker that's going to be in there. We're hoping to have one sign within the two square feet on our property, just so my clients can find where the salon is located. And we aren't going to store any storage items in outbuildings outside of the home. Delivery of goods will be coming in like Amazon vans, that's where I'm going to order the bulk of my products from. And we have a lot of off-street parking. I did include a map with the application and pictures of the driveway. It's a very lo, long driveway, and there is a turnaround like pullout area, so people do not have to back out onto that main road. The home is not going to be a daycare facility, and we're not applicable for the site serviced by municipal sewer verification part. And then for the, I read that, that we need applicable licenses and stuff. Dog grooming is an unregulated industry, so there are no permits that we need to get for the state for the business to be run.
Okay, and?
Sorry, I think that's it.
Okay, is there any questions then from the board?
You're handling one dog at a time?
Yep, it's going to be one dog at a time or one family at a time. We're not using any kennels, and it's a maximum of five clients per day, so no more than five additional cars per day. In the variance, when we were applying for the variance, we went all over that information as well. So the maximum amount of increase of cars is five cars. We have a waiting room where clients will be able to sit and wait for their dogs to cut down on the traffic, and we also had agreed to do it not during busy times, so it's not going to interfere with commute like to and from work for other people in the neighborhood.
What are your hours?
So my hours are going to be between, basically nine AM and five PM the latest, but we're going to have the dogs pick up before the busy time, so hopefully around four thirty as long as things go to plan.
Monday through Friday?
It's going to be five days a week. Though date, the exact days, I don't have, I can set them now if we need to, but I was hoping to do one weekend day, and so do like Sunday through Thursdays, with Fridays and Saturdays off would be my goal.
But only five days?
Yep, five days a week, yep.
I'm okay.
Okay. Any other questions, anybody?
No, she answered mine.
Okay, okay. Recommendations then from the board?
Public hearing?
Oh, I have to do public, okay, sorry. Yeah, public hearing, if there's anybody from the public that wishes to weigh in or against? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Okay, then recommendations from the board?
Come on, guys. I make a motion to find that with the proposed conditions of approval, the conditional use permit application meets all applicable regulatory requirements, and further to grant conditional final approval to the conditional use permit, subject to the recommendation, recommended conditions of approval presented in the staff memo dated August second, two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay, need a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Andy, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Four zero zero.
Oh, awesome, thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, item six, Project Tower Retail LLC, Cara Richard Botnick owner, applicant, review for acceptance and consideration of a site plan to merge tax map seven E lots forty and forty dash one, then construct two sixty-seven thousand nine hundred square feet warehouses across two phases, with each phase consisting of one warehouse and its associated site improvements. The parcels are located at six, or seven sixty-four and seven sixty-eight Daniel Webster Highway in the I-one Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map seven E lots forty and forty dash one, case Planning Board two thousand and twenty-four dash fourteen. All right, please introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about.
Thank you, board. My name is Brent Cole, I'm with Granite Engineering, we're the civil engineers for this project. It's on.
And bring it close.
That's good?
Yeah.
Great.
Great, says, okay.
Again, my name is Brent Cole with Granite Engineering, we're the civil engineers for this project. To my left is Scott O'Neil with Procon, he is the architect for the project, and behind me, we have the owners, Mike Gramshaw and Mark Jobin, as well as my business partner, Jeff Merritt from Granite Engineering as well. We are here tonight for a warehouse project at seven sixty-four and seven sixty-eight DW Highway. The property is the former Town Line Golf Course Range. It is at the town of Bedford and town of Merrimack Town Line. Everett Turnpike is to the west, DW Highway is to the east, and then we have a large tower to the south. The property still has a parking facility on it from the driving range, the building has been raised, the driveway there still exists, and the driveway still provides access to the existing tower that is on site. There is an existing freestanding tower located in this area here. If you know the site, you know that it's basically fully cleared, with the exception of the wetland that is out back at the toe of the slope of the Everett Turnpike. It is roughly fourteen acres in size, and it is in your industrial zoning district. We are proposing, and as you can see on this plan, we are proposing to merge two lots in order to create a project that can, that can hold these two sixty-seven thousand square foot warehouse buildings. Each warehouse building will have its own loading dock and maneuvering area, which is located on the east side of each building here and here. To the west of the building is the employee parking area, so you'll see a deployment parking area here, as well as another one with the second building. Access to the buildings is through a southern driveway. The driveway location is very similar to where the location is today, and there's an access aisle that comes up the south side of each building, it provides access for the trucks as well as the employees. The two buildings in this setup that we have here works very well with the land. The site slopes upward from east to west, so each one of these buildings is stepped as you go up with your four-foot loading docks on the east side, and then your entrance to the building a little bit higher on the west side. The stormwater is collected through a closed drainage system. Each building has its own subsurface drainage system located here and here, that provides the mitigation for the site as well as the stormwater treatment for the entire property. I'll switch to the utility plan real quick. As you can see here, on this big green area is one of the underground stormwater systems. The site is also served by municipal water, so there's a ten-inch fire service line entering both buildings as well as the domestic water. We have underground utilities as well as underground gas. And there's fire hydrants situated throughout the entire site. Moving forward through the plan set, the lighting and landscaping, lighting will be provided throughout the site at the loading areas, the parking areas, as well as the entrance road coming in. And landscaping surrounds the site as well with emphasis on the fifty-foot landscape buffer in this area to make sure there's some screening between DW Highway and the proposed warehouses. Traffic for this site is very minimal. It is a DOT jurisdictional road that we derive access from, so the, the traffic disperses relatively quickly, especially with the highway to the north. The traffic for a, a small warehouse is typically two hundred and fifty-four total trips for this type of project, so it's a very, very small traffic generator. If I flip back to the overview plan, this is a phased project, and it phases out fairly nicely, because we have the two buildings here. You will find a dark black line that splits the view. Phase one is down towards the DW Highway, this will be building one. All the infrastructure associated with that phase will be constructed, parking lot, loading, stormwater, and the septic system that's located on site will be constructed in this phase. Phase two will be the second building and all of those site improvements. We have a series of permits that we will need for this project. I mentioned DOT jurisdictional roads, we will have to get a driveway permit with DOT. We are here tonight for local site plan approval, as well as a voluntary lot merger. Concom is scheduled for next week, because we are in the Aquifer Protection District. And then we have an alteration of terrain permit with the state, as well as a septic permit. We did receive a series of comments already from the town, we haven't received any state comments yet, and we're still waiting on town engineering comments. The comments that we've gotten so far are fairly benign, I don't see any that are, are any issue that we can resolve with the town, so everything looks good so for, so far, and we'll just continue to wait for those comments. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Scott, he's got some nice renderings and some elevations to show you guys, and from there, take it over to Scott.
Thanks, Brent. As mentioned, the project consists of shell and core design for two sixty-seven thousand nine hundred square foot warehouse buildings. Each building has been designed for a maximum of three tenants currently, with the ability to flex down to one or two tenants as the market demands. As Brent mentioned, we oriented the buildings to try to take advantage of the natural grade of the site, where there's a, basically a twenty-foot grade change from DW Highway to the backside of the wetlands on the west side, using the four-foot height change from the loading dock to the finished floor of each building. The buildings are very simple, exterior walls are, consist of insulated precast concrete wall panels. The interior will have a structural steel frame. The roof will consist of a metal deck with poly-isoe insulation and a single-ply TPO roof membrane. Windows will be thermally broken frames with insulated glazing, and all exterior doors and frames will be insulated as well. Each building will also be protected throughout with a ESFR sprinkler system and fire alarm system complying with NFPA thirteen and NFPA seventy-two. And that's basically it as far as the buildings go.
Hey, we've got some renderings here I can flip through real quick. Procon did a great job kind of showing you the property. You'll see a lot of the exterior trees that are out there that help shield kind of the existing buildings. You'll see the side, I think it's a very sharp-looking building. These renderings pretty much show real-life situations. But yeah, it's a typical warehouse in your industrial zone on the, on the Town Line border. Nothing really exists on the site today, so I think it's a great use of the site, and with that, we'll hand it back to you.
Sorry, Casey, I forgot to ask if there was anything on that staff, or anything we should know or?
Uh, no, not at this time. I think later in the meeting, there's just some discussion points that I want to make sure get brought up, but for now, the board can accept the application as complete if you're ready to do that.
Okay. All right, so I guess we can move on to the completeness, to see, yeah, decide whether it's complete or not, have a motion for completeness? Have a motion for completeness?
Come on, guys. Uh I move that we accept the application as is complete.
So a second?
Second.
Okay, John seconded. Uh all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, four zero zero. Okay, um so far there's no waivers at this time, so open up for a public hearing. If there was any members of the public that wish to speak, please make sure to speak into the microphone and state your name and.
Thank you, yeah, thank you very much to the honorable board. Uh my name's Chris Drescher. I'm an attorney with Cronin, Bisson, and Zelinski in Manchester, and I'm here representing the abutter to the south of the subject property. The the uh exact address is seven five two Daniel Webster Highway. It's otherwise known on your tax records as lot seventy dash thirty-nine dash one, uh to be noted for the record. And my client is Colbea LLC, which is the owner of that lot to the south. Uh Colbea LLC is a corporate entity behind Seasons Markets. For those of you who might be familiar with some of our stores, uh we do what I would consider to be higher-end, you know, convenience store gas stations. Uh we have one over on Amber Street in Nashwood by the Merrimack border across from Target to give you uh some perspective in case you're wondering. Uh now, from the outset, I just want to say to the honorable board that um, you know, as well as the applicant, we don't as a general matter have any problem with this project. We we don't really oppose it. What we what we do oppose and what we do have a bit of a concern with um is the location of the curb cut for the driveway. Uh 'cause that is right on the southern point of the lot, and it and it actually flares out almost when you look at the plans. It flares out and really comes up against our lot and almost over into our lot. Um now, our concern there is that our lot is this won- because the best legal term is that it's a little wonky. It's this triangle. It's small. It's under two acres. And admittedly, we don't have anything before any of the town boards at this time for a project, but we do in-house tentatively do have plans uh for another Seasons there, potentially. Um and the only place that we can really put our own driveway would really kind of butt heads with where they have their set right now on that southern tip of the lot. Um now, you know, our concern is it's warehouses. We're talking, you know, big, heavy trucks, big eighteen-wheeler trucks. And uh I'm not sure if they're gonna be able to take a left out of that, but I can tell you if they're gonna be taking a right. If you're a big truck and you're coming out of that driveway and you're taking a right, it slopes down a little bit. Um and I know this is a speculative thing to say, but you know, I'm you know, I'm in the business of what-ifs. You know, if you have a truck driver who's got a big truck and he sees a clear shot, you know, they they might be liable to just roll on out and not necessarily stop. Again, I know that's speculative, uh but we're concerned about, you know, also traffic coming in and out of a gas station, which would be immediately south. And obviously, you could see our concerns uh from a life and basic life and safety standpoint is our concern. Um so all we would ask uh of the applicant and possibly this board is to just require uh that that driveway entrance possibly be, you know, niched up a little bit to the north uh just to give us a little bit of a buffer zone there. Uh I'm not sure you could do anything like put a traffic light, given that it's a state highway. I think that would be under the DOT's purview, and even then, I don't even know if you'd get anywhere with that. But uh I just would like to note it for the record uh that we do take issue with just just where that curb cut is and for the driveway. But otherwise, we we really do hope that the the applicant gets their their approvals and and does prosper and has and has their project built. But we just need to be on the record, make sure we protect our rights with respect to our lot to the south, okay? Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, okay, now close then the public hearing and give you a chance to speak.
Sure, I can speak to that. Uh so just for the record, there is no, you know, property infringement or anything onto their property. Uh we did work with DOT to site this driveway. I'll bring up the overview plan um so you can kind of see what is going on. Uh these are situated so that trucks can exit both left and right if need be. Uh majority probably would be taking a left, um 'cause that's, you know, where the highway is. But there is this flare here to allow the trucks to actually get out onto the uh self-bound lane. Uh this is, I believe, what uh the attorney Drescher is discussing. It doesn't go over our property line. Um and that was important for the DOT when we had a scoping meeting with them and we situated this this driveway. We have received comments from DOT. Um they did ask us to try to flare uh this triangle here a little bit better. Um it means that maybe there's a possibility that we can shift that driveway up a little bit more north. But again, this is all within our property. Um nothing gets put on to lot thirty-nine one. Um everything done is within our frontage, um and and really that driveway kind of exists in that location today. You can even see the easement um where the existing uh driveway is for the tower um right here, which is very close to that southern tip as well. Um so again, just to note, we are, there's no property infringement. There's nothing that's going off of our property. And DOT has reviewed this, doesn't have any safety concerns, but has made a couple of recommendations.
Any questions then from the board? Yes.
I can understand the concern on the abutters part. This is where the existing driveway is, but the exist- the previous use didn't have eighteen-wheelers coming and going from it. So I think that's a legitimate concern. If that driveway could be moved further north so that your flare is not as close to the property line, um I think that would be advantageous. If they develop that site into what they typically do, you're gonna have multiple curb cuts there with cars exiting and entering, and it would be close. So that's a potential issue. You've got flat roofs. Where are your mechanicals?
Uh they'll be located on the roof.
They're not shown on the roof now?
No, because we do we do not have a design as of yet.
And will they be appropriately shielded from view?
Um yes, they will.
Okay. Um I do like your facades. Too many times people come in from a warehouse and you gotta, from here to here is flat gray, nothing.
Yeah.
Um so I appreciate the fact that you've you've made an effort to um do something different other than just to make it a little more aesthetically pleasing, so thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Go to staff.
Okay, staff, you have you had some things that you wanted to.
So and I I just wanted to note that staff is not recommending conditional approval tonight uh because we do not have peer review back from Boston O'Neil. Uh sometimes they catch things from an engineering perspective that require a waiver from your board. Uh and then, like the applicant said, uh they have not yet been to the Concom, um and we would like uh comments from a couple other municipal departments. Uh as far as concerns from community development staff, uh my my biggest concern was the proposed use and just clarity on what that use is, only because we've seen similar developments elsewhere in town where the plans will say warehousing, um storage, but then later when they have a tenant, it's manufacturing um or some kind of research assembly, uh so just a a conversation with the applicant about what that use will be and what kind of tenants are coming in.
We did see the staff report, um and we did talk with the owner. The owner knows uh that it it will be strictly warehouse. Um if he does, obviously, he doesn't have tenants right now, but in the search for tenants and in the the leasing program, if there are uh individuals that don't necessarily meet the criteria of warehouse, he would have to come back in front of this board um with a site plan amendment proving out parking and and septic and everything that may change. Uh but he's well aware of it. Uh they're marketing strictly to warehouse tenants right now. Um but obviously, you know, markets change and things of that nature, and he knows the process that he'd be up having to go through.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
Yes.
You say the site is vacant. There is a sign on that site. It is an ancient sign. I will not approve this unless you guarantee that that sign will be gone before anything else happens.
Can you make that guarantee? We can make that guarantee.
The sooner the better.
I would just like to weigh in here also um what Lynn had said and about, you know, the the concerns here from the public regarding um that entrance is, do you know what the measurements are um between the property? Because like where that comes out, it does look small. Do you happen to know, like, what that?
Uh I can tell you right now that the edge of our pavement is synonymous with the property line. We we made sure not to go one inch over, but it is directly there. Um we'll see what we can do to kind of shorten that up, even if we were to do some sort of uh
Push it up.
shoulder that, you know, because it truly is only this way because of the rear tires for a a large truck. Um but they can navigate over, you know, a mounted shoulder or something like that if need be to try to break up that uh the mass of the entrance.
But again, you've got potentially multiple curb cuts on the property to the south, I think, which is more of a concern. I can drive an eighteen-wheeler left and right through there. Um that's not my concern. But I would like to see it further north just to push it away from the adjacent property. Just a suggestion.
We'll we'll take a look at it. It it is a little bit of a tricky site.
Thank you.
The the grade does play a big role on this site, um but we'll take a look at it.
Okay, so what is the will of the board?
Andy, your turn.
I'm I'm supposed to be watching and learning here. This is my first one. So we we've already done completeness. Now we're doing recommendation.
The bold print there.
Pardon me?
The bold print there.
Yeah, so make a recommendation or make a motion that we continue the applicant's public hearing to the September third, two thousand twenty-four planning board meeting. Period. I guess that's the end.
I'll second.
All right, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is is that date okay?
It's perfect.
Yeah.
Okay. Um all opposed, all abstaining, okay, four zero zero two.
Appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item seven, planning and zoning administrators report discussion of possible action regarding other items of concern. Do I read those then or?
Sorry, I was just transferring my paperwork.
Sorry.
So this has been on your agenda for at least two or three meetings in a row. But there does need to be a member of the planning board uh on the heritage commission to represent the planning board.
Okay, so we need to
Yeah.
appoint somebody?
Who's not here tonight.
Ideally, I realize that you only have half your board.
Actually, I think it's something that Nelson might enjoy doing.
That's true.
And I have no problem appointing him. And if he wants to refuse it, he could do that at the next meeting, but um Nelson's got the knowledge and and I think the interest that he would do as well.
Do you want me to give him a call this week to kind of see if he's interested?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't wanna.
The it, does it have to be appointed tonight or can we?
Uh it doesn't have to be done tonight. It's just uh
We've been pushing.
It's been hanging out there for a while.
Yeah, we kicked the can down the road a couple times now, but.
But I I think I'd ask Nelson if he would be willing to do it.
Sure, I can do that.
Yeah. Okay, so we're just gonna ask him and just point it off and then next meeting.
Unless any of you guys want to do it.
I'm good.
Okay, um.
Nothing else.
Nothing else then, so now just move on to the approval of the minutes from July second, two thousand twenty-four. It's item eight. Do I have a motion for the approval of the minutes?
Go for it, John.
I take a motion with the approved minute. I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the July second meeting as written.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
You can still second a motion even if you're abstaining.
Really?
Yes.
Well, I suppose, yes, you can, yes.
Okay, so second by Andy?
No, by Lynn.
By Lynn?
Yeah, I took him off the hook.
Oh, you took him off the, okay, sorry, okay, seconded by Lynn.
He's gonna be on the.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um opposed, abstaining, aye. Okay, so two zero two. Can that work?
Yeah, that's not a passing motion, it's a tie, so.
I guess I can just, all right, then I will vote in favor for it. That's fine. Okay, so three and zero.
I'm over adjourned.
Okay.
It's not just more for us meeting learning, it's hers, and she did a fabulous job.
It's only my second meeting.
Okay, so we're all adjourned. We're good. Do we have to vote? So adjourn, okay. All right, all in favor for adjourning, aye. All in favor, four zero zero. Thank you.